...of the Virgin City Council to order on November 27, 2018 at 5:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no amendments to the agenda that need to be at least made at this point. I'll sign it in a minute. And let's see, we have visitors for comments, and so it shows Samantha Dunn, but I know that Elise is here, but...
Samantha is not going to make it just because of the weather.
Okay.
So, where should I...
Any place you'd like. There are cameras everywhere, so you can stand anywhere.
So, I'm Elise Chanbacker, I'm the executive director of the Addison County Community Trust. Our development partner, Housing Vermont, was here with me just about a year ago. That's Samantha Dunn, who sends her regrets tonight. And we wanted to come tonight just to give you an update on the project at Armory Lane, and also request for a public hearing to be scheduled, and that's in conjunction with the community development block grant proposal that was approved at that city council meeting a year ago. So, project updates, we've gotten $1.8 million of a little over $7 million that will need to be in the project. The next bulk of funding that we are expecting will come hopefully in April. We're on track to secure a loan from housing tax credit grant this spring, and then the last piece of funding we'll need is that community development block grant, and we'll be requesting $400,000 for that. So for that funding application, we'll need to have a public hearing by the end of January. And if we hit all of those timelines, we're anticipating a construction start in September of 2019. That's basically it. The public hearing can be scheduled with the city council meeting, separate from the city council meeting, just needs to happen by the end of January and be advertised, and we can work with Matt on making sure the advertisements get out properly and so forth.
Yeah, probably be the first or second meeting in January.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public for that matter? It's a big project, you can hear, as you hear, it was $7 million, and so it's not a small...
24 units of multifamily housing, serving households up to 120% of area median income. For those of you who weren't here last year or aren't familiar with the project, so very excited about it.
Do you have any projections of the total cost per square foot?
We do. It's always changing, and I don't know the number off the top of my head. We're trying to keep the total development cost, so that includes soft costs, not just construction, under $300,000 a unit. The gross square foot of the building is probably about $25,000. Those are very rough numbers, but it's expensive.
Thanks.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any questions on the warrants, by the way? Okay. Minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 13.
Motion has been made and...
Seconded.
Seconded? Okay. Do we have any modifications to the minutes?
I may, but it might be my confusion. I thought we were at the Union Cemetery, not Prospect Cemetery. Was I, did I have the wrong one?
It was Prospect.
Okay. I just didn't want to... It was just, I wanted to make sure we had the right cemetery. For some reason, I thought we were talking about the Union Cemetery. So, that's fine.
You were correct, Joan. You're right. That is correct.
Just have a question, the same, I think, when we're talking to the library trustee, said that we had two board of trustees who represent Virgens. Is that the way the board of trustees is set up? That separate people are, so they're not really, they just happen to live in Virgens, they're not really representing Virgens?
Right, that's right.
So, that might be clarified. It's the sixth line down, the two members already on the board of trustees, for instance, that represent Virgens are Peter and Nile, but it really is who live in Virgens.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, we can change "represent" to "reside in"?
Yeah, I just, because they're not really there to do that.
Do you have any, I have a few.
Am I correcting something with what you just said? I can't, I can't even find what paragraph you are in.
So, last page, middle of, so, one, two, three, four, sixth line down.
Okay.
It says, "Board of trustees that represent Virgens."
Yep.
Just be who reside in Virgens.
So, on page two, appointment of trustee to Bixby Library Board, in the, towards the end of the sentence, this is one sentence there, it says, "An executive session to discuss personalities of the applicants for the position. I'd rather change that word 'personalities' to qualifications." We may have discussed their personalities, but that's not the really, the reason. And, let's see, in the update, "Traffic Safety Committee," third line down, it says, "Mayor Rennie Perry advised the ad hoc, yeah, the ad hoc committee has been working," and I think we should change that, "advised and ad hoc committee has been working," or looking. And then further down that line where it says, "Whether it would have a positive impact, if you would stick in between positive and impact, economic," because that's what really that committee is working on, is economic impact. And the last one that, no, maybe not the last one. The next thing is Basin Task Force appointments, and it says here, "City manager Matt Chabot reported he has spoken with Tim Cook," and I assume it should be the Recreation Committee and not the Basin Task Force.
Correct.
Okay.
Recreation?
Committee, yeah. And the last one that I have anyhow is in the city manager's report, third line from the bottom, switch around, it has Basin Downtown Master Plan, it should be Downtown Basin Master Plan, and further on that sentence, it says, "To present with the bypass plans," and I think it would be more accurate to say Main Street paving plans.
Main Street paving plans.
Sorry about this, I probably should have sent you an email on all of this. So, page three, top of the page, I assume that should be either Mayor Perry, or it should be Manager Chabot. Either one, I'm not sure which one. Top of the page. And then if we go to Mahawi LLC...
Manager.
Second line, "Appeal with the city in the Supreme Court." And the next line after that, after Schlansky, it says, it says, "To assist him," it really should say, "to create..." "...with more clarity in our zoning regulations." And the last one I have in the mayor's report, next to the last line, should be changed Next to the last line in that mayor's report.
Oh, God, I said when manager, oh, Jesus.
That's it for me. Any other changes? Seeing no other changes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, minutes. Citizen comments. Do we have any comments from citizens on anything that is not on the agenda? And since you don't have the agenda, if you tell me something, I'll tell you whether it's on the agenda. No? Okay. Then Chief, we move to you.
Great. Well, thanks for everybody coming tonight. I'm going to start out, if I may, to stand up just for a second. It's customary, whenever we start a recognition night, that we have a moment of silence for all the police officers and any first responders. So, if you would, just bow your head a minute and pay respects. Okay, go ahead, take your seats. All right, so, again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. What I'd like to start out with is introduction of my police officers for some of you that don't know who these guys and gals are. The gentleman that escorted the young lady out with the little one is my sergeant, Jason Olet. Jason is a hometown boy. Next, Officer Patrick Greenslip, K-9 officer Adam O'Neal and his sidekick Kane, Mark Barber, Jill Harder, Mark Stacy. Lost an accent, Mark Stacy. There's a difference between the two, Mark, that Mark, Vermont Mark and Massachusetts Mark. Mason Coleman, our newest member of the department, Paul Philian, and Ketchapaw, Mr. Ketchapaw, Richard Ketchapaw. So, those are our officers. The other thing I'm going to ask my officers to do, it's customary, we're law enforcement, like fire service is big on tradition, the blue rose. And the reason we issue the blue rose is recognition of the family members that each and every day sacrifice a little something for the safety of that community by allowing their, and supporting their police officers in their line of work. So, what I'm going to ask officers to do, before I forget, let me step back, I'd like to thank the families that support us, because without family support, both the families that are here and not here, without family support, it makes a very challenging job, that much more difficult. So, we rely very heavily on the families, they wear the burden, just like we do as police officers, and I want to thank them. So, round of applause. What I'd like to ask you to do, for those of you that have family members here, I would like to ask you to take a rose and present it to the family member, please. Go ahead, do that. Go ahead. We haven't quite figured out how Kane could get one in his mouth and transport it over there. Adam, you got two?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. I do that. Yep. And I'd also like to present a rose to somebody who each and every week has to put up with Chief Merkel's administrative abilities or lack thereof.
I hope you have a bouquet.
And this person also is not remiss from taking a good, healthy shot once in a year. We appreciate everything Joan does for you. Just thank Joan for letting me work again. Okay, so, my quote I'd like to give you a little rundown of Virginia Police Department 2018. The year 2018 presented Virginia Police Department with some unique opportunities and challenges. Certainly criminal activity kept us busy throughout the year, specifically during an early summer period when we experienced 18 car entries and thefts from within. While each incident was not the nature of a large theft, each incident presented a form of embarrassment to us. We don't like people doing things like that in the city of Virgens. We are the protectors of our community. Due to the dedicated performance of all our officers, the culprit was apprehended for those offenses as well as other offenses. Impaired driving and speeding continue to require our attention as well as substance abuse and mental health issues. As each year goes on, this job becomes more and more challenging and requires officers to be more and more well-rounded, and the ability to work with little or no support from another officer. This year, we saw a number of our officers recognized at state level for their outstanding performances, which I'll elaborate on a little bit. We also received recognition at a local level on a number of occasions for our department's willingness to work together with other Addison County law enforcement agencies across town and across city lines to keep our community and surround communities safe. In 2018, we saw a number of officers attain advanced training, which will tremendously enhance our capabilities and the safety of our community. Sergeant Jason Olet attended the National Tactical Officers Instructor Course for Officer Response to Active Shooters. We've already put this training into good use, hosting a course at Virginia Union High School the day before Thanksgiving for our officers, as well as officers from surrounding departments. Officer Mark Barber attended the National Highway Traffic Safety Course for Drug Recognition and is now functioning in that capacity, giving the Virginia Police Department two drug recognition experts. And as I may have, you may have remembered before, a drug recognition expert, they're a very, very small community, it's a very challenging course, it's not easy, not everybody passes it, but it's a vital asset to our department and to the state. The AREs also function as instructors for school administrations to enable detection of persons under influence of drugs and/or alcohol. We also, one of our own has also selected the committee member on the Governor's Community Violent Task Force, and is currently working with us, state and local officials, to develop strategies to counter violent behavior. Virginia Police Department was recently selected as a recipient of National Highway Traffic Safety Grant to implement county traffic safety coordinator, to implement a county traffic safety coordinator position. This grant not only provides funding for a new officer position for one year, but also provides critical funding for highway safety enforcement's activities for 2018 and 2019. Virginia Police Department is committed to ensuring the safety of our community, we value the support and cooperation of our community, and we continue to work on developing our relationship with our citizens, specifically our youth. We'll also be focusing on individual and collective training this next year to improve the department's overall effectiveness and capabilities. One thing I wanted to tell you tonight, one of the things are the bedrock of our philosophy that follows Sir Robert Peel, the forefather of community policing. He had nine principles, and I'll read those to you. Principle number one, the basic mission for which the police exist is to prevent crime and prevent disorder. Number two, the ability of the police is to, the ability of police to perform their duties is dependent upon the public approval of police actions. Number three, police must secure the willing cooperation of the public in voluntary observance of the law to be able to secure and maintain the respect of the public. Number four, the degree of cooperation of the public that can be secured diminishes proportionally to the necessity of the use of physical force. I'm very proud to say, the amount of times my officers have ever had to use physical force is very, very small. That's a credit to their ability as police officers. Police seek and preserve public favor not by catering to the public opinion, but by constantly demonstrating absolute impartial service to law. Police use physical force to extent, to the extent necessary to secure observance of the law or to restore order only when the exercise of persuasion, advice, and warning is found to be insufficient. Police at all times should maintain a relationship with the public that gives reality to the sort of vision that the police are the public and the public are the police. The police being only members of the public who are paid to give full-time attention to duties which are incumbent on every citizen in the interest of community welfare and existence. Police should never, should always, always direct their attention strictly towards their functions and never appear to usurp the powers of the judiciary. And finally, the test of police efficiency is the absence of crime and disorder, not the visible evidence of police action and dealing with it. Those are Sir Robert Peel's principles, and we live these each and every day. Now, this past year, we've seen some tremendous performance by each one of these officers. I'm going to now present some awards to them. These are just a few of the many instances where these officers have distinguished themselves. The first award will be going to two officers. I'm going to read the citation and then ask both officers to come up. These officers are awarded the Virginia Police Department Meritorious Service Award for outstanding performance during the investigation of a series of car breaks entries, which took place during the period of 16 May to 29 July throughout the city of Virgens and surrounding municipalities. During this investigation, it was determined that perpetrator had entered and stolen from 18 vehicles. At the conclusion of the investigation, Virginia Police Department executed a search warrant for an apartment building within the city, arrested the subject for these offenses, in addition to larceny, aggravated domestic assault, and for an active arrest warrant. This paralytic performance of both Officer Mark Barber and Officer Jill Harder are a credit to the professionalism and dedication of themselves and the Virginia Police Department. Can I have both officers come up here, please? The next award I'm going to present also has two officers that are the recipients of this. This is something that we deal more and more with each and every day, and that's the mental health aspect. It is a challenge for people that are trained to handle mental health, people that are having some emotional duress during mental health issues, and our officers not only dealt with it well and diffused it, but they actually were acknowledged by some of the patrons in a restaurant because of the way they handled it. Virginia Police Department Meritorious Award is presented to two officers, these two officers for their outstanding performance on the 16th of March, 2018. Both officers responded to a report of a male acting suspiciously and scaring patrons at the Three Square Cafe in Virgens during their encounter with a male who suffered from a traumatic brain injury. They demonstrated both extreme restraint and compassion. Together, they were able to calm the individual and remove him from the premises without incident. Their professionalism, calming skills, and compassion were so evident, they were noted by both employees and patrons of the establishment, and prompted witnesses to comment on their outstanding abilities. This outstanding performance is attributed to each officer, the Virginia Police Department, and Vermont law enforcement. Sergeant Olet and Officer O'Neal, please come up. Okay, the next award goes to one officer. This should have been awarded previously, but nevertheless, this is a heroism award, and this is being issued to Officer Mark Stacy. Virginia Police Department presents this heroism award to Officer Mark Stacy for his courageous actions on the 8th of December, 2017. On this date, Officer Stacy, along with other Virgens and Vermont police officers, responded to the report of an explosion at the United Technologies Corporation facility on Pant Road in the city of Virgens. Without concern for his own welfare, Officer Stacy ran into the building assisting employees to safety. At the time, Officer Stacy entered the building, hallways were smog-filled, presenting a challenge to his vision and breathing. Also during the time, there existed the possibility of another explosion due to volatile chemical materials stored within the facility. Officer Stacy's actions are attributed to himself, Virginia Police Department, and the profession of law enforcement. Officer Stacy. And we have two recipients of motor vehicle enforcement, first of which presented to Officer Stacy. Presents the meritorious, Virginia Police Department presents this award to Officer Stacy of the Virginia Police Department during the year of 2017. Officer Stacy conducted 478 motor vehicle stops, leading to issuing 279 tickets and 199 warnings. Motor vehicle enforcement is the cornerstone of Virginia Police Department's law enforcement strategy, a cornerstone, and speed enforcement is an integral part of it. Officer Stacy's professionalism and dedication to duty are a credit to himself, Virginia Police Department, and the profession of law enforcement. Officer Stacy. The second recipient is Officer Patrick Greenslip. During the year of 2017, Officer Greenslip conducted 319 motor vehicle stops, leading to 16 arrests for impaired driving during that period of time. Impaired driving enforcement is extremely important. Each and every day, we read about the tragedies that result on our highways because of it. Officer Greenslip's professionalism and dedication to duty are a credit to himself, the Virginia Police Department, and the profession of law enforcement. Now, the gentleman asked me not to acknowledge him tonight, but I don't listen real well. And this is certainly deserved. So, each and every year, the American Legion has asked for applications for the American Legion Officer of the Year Award. This is the second year he has been submitted, and he was selected as runner-up. The recipient of this award is Sergeant Jason Olet. Sergeant Olet is truly a one-of-a-kind officer. He wears every hat to be worn and then some in performance of his duties. He epitomizes the adage of "be known, do, and sets the standard for job proficiency and knowledge in community policing." He's one of the best criminal investigators that I have known, and consistently obtains critical information and confessions from suspects and witnesses alike, while treating people with dignity and respect, and I underline dignity and respect. He has been instrumental in solving both county and statewide cases involving narcotics, burglaries, and thefts, armed robberies, and other types of criminal cases. I don't need to tell you how dangerous it is to investigate drug sales, drug trafficking. Sergeant Olet, during his period of time with the Drug Task Force, was acknowledged, and he was heavily recruited by the Vermont State Police and other federal agencies to come join him, and he chose to stay here in Virgens, and we benefited from that. He handles a multitude of tasks in a professional manner, but the real insight is to what this man's priorities really are, and what he stands for is dedication to his family as a superlative father and husband. He is a true role model, not only to his fellow officers, but to the community. He lives in and serves. He's a patriot, he's a proud American, and he's intimately familiar with his country's history and his nation's constitution. His core values are rock solid, and he's well-known for his honesty and his integrity. He's fiercely loyal to his family, his profession, fellow officers. I highly recommend Sergeant Olet for the American Legion Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. He is the epitome of a professional and dedicated law enforcement officer and leader. Sergeant Olet. And I'll tell you this, writing awards sometimes takes over something, but I've never had a problem writing awards for my guys, because it's, when you know something so, is so clearly evident, it makes it very easy to write an award. And these guys, I mean, these are just a few of the things that these guys do, anything from changing tires, helping people across the street, helping with an unrealty child, whatever else, these guys do it well. And I can't emphasize how valuable these officers are to the community of Virgens. They do their job, they do it humbly, and they do it well. Now, last but not least, this is going to come to a surprise to an officer that is here tonight. I have to review something here, excuse me just one sec. 31 years, is that correct, Pat, of law enforcement experience? 31 years of law enforcement experience. 18 years with the city of Virgens?
Yes.
18 years with the city of Virgens. That tells you a little something about the guy. 31 years is a long time to be in this profession. 18 years is a long time to serve. He was recently referred to as a gentle giant, Officer Pat. His dry sense of humor, he's a Vermonter. He has very clearly dry sense of humor. But he wears his uniform proudly. You listen to the man talk, talk about the history of policing, talk about Vermont in particular, he's a proud Vermonter, he's a proud law enforcement officer, and he's a proud Virgens police officer. So, with that in mind, I think, and it's my honor and privilege to promote Officer Greenslip to Corporal Greenslip. He too, he too wears a number of hats, and he wears them well. He's the evidence officer, he does, I can go on and on about them. We all wear hats, we all wear a multitude of hats, and we've gotten good at that, and because we're a small department, we have to. But I can't say enough about these guys. Now, this is a tough job. Jesus, I do this every day, I'm here. That's how much I love my guys. Thank you very much. Again, you guys are always welcome to the household. You have any questions, you want to come by and visit, you're always welcome. Once again, very sincerely, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's, uh, put these chairs away.
I'll take care of that and leave them. Are you going to speak about the grant?
Yes. All right, you guys, what do you need help with? No, I just need to have this thing back to the office quickly, and we're all set. I gotta talk about the grant real quick. Maybe by the end of six years, I'll get it together at the end, and I don't get choked up, but I will.
You should get it together. Part of the review.
Okay. Do you want to add something to your word for the, I can send it to you.
Please do.
For all the awards, or just my presentation?
If you can summarize the awards, that would be helpful.
Ask Matt about my summarizing, but I'll do my best.
Just any time next day.
He did great, he kept it under half an hour.
I had, I had, I can hear it. It was close. Thank you. Just ask you to, um, we'll approach. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
I've got some notes.
Before, before we go on to the brand, I'd like to thank you, Chief, and your department. You really make us proud on the service that you have given to the city.
I'm very proud of Virgens, and Virgens is my community. I don't live here, but I do live here, and this is my community, and I'm very proud of it, and I wear this uniform very proudly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, Vermont Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant, Chief?
Yes, so we applied, the Virgens Police Department, I'm back up. National Highway Traffic Safety Administration provided funding to the Vermont Governor's Highway Safety Program for traffic safety coordinator position. We applied for that grant. We submitted a application, and we were selected along with one other county in the state, and that was Wyndham County. Purpose of this grant is twofold. First of all, it provides operational funding, not only to the Virgens Police Department, but other police departments within Addison County, and this is the money we use to do DUI enforcement, speed enforcement, impaired driving, well, all impaired driving, distracted driving, and these are overtime funds specifically for officers to work above and beyond forty hours to conduct highway safety activities in and around Virgens. It's not limited to Virgens, but we try to keep a lot of our work within the city. And each municipality was awarded money based on their past performance and their projected performance. So that's one part of this grant. That's the operational piece. The other part of the grant is basically what they call the education piece, but that's for funding for a traffic safety coordinator. Now, the purpose of the traffic safety coordinator is, he's multifaceted. First of all, he will be conducting regular motor vehicle enforcement, not only in Virgens, but throughout Addison County. Now, that's based on data-driven information. It's not just going down and sitting at the four corners of Addison, Addison and waiting for something to happen. When we have specific enforcement activity that's required, we go to those areas based on data. And then what we do is reevaluate that, and we go back and modify our approach to fixing the problem. But we just don't go out there and do it and then leave and not go back again. It's always evaluation, performance and evaluation. Not only does he do that, he will coordinate with other departments, whether they participate with us or not, participate in the grant, and we go out and do checkpoints, impaired driving checkpoints. We'll do presentations at high schools, and elementary schools, and middle schools. We will be doing public speaking announcements or engagements. There's a number of things that this officer is going to be doing. Likewise, the other part, going back to the operational piece, each department, and the three departments that are going to be participating in this grant with us are Virgens, Middlebury, and Bristol. State police have their own pot of money, so they do their own thing. They manage their own. And one of the requirements was that you are a member or you participate in Governor's Highway Safety, but there was no requirement for you to participate in this grant. So in other, we have three departments. Officer Stacy will be managing those grants. He'll be taking the paperwork in. So in other words, if an officer goes out and does a DUI patrol, when he or she is done, they fill it out, they submit it to Mark Stacy, who's going to be our traffic safety coordinator, and then he in turn will make sure that it gets to Governor's Highway Safety and we get paid. So that he's going to be wearing a number of different hats, all under the umbrella of traffic safety coordinator. It's a one-year grant, it's a one-year grant, and the officer that's coming in behind him is going to be in a limited service contract, that being Officer Fillion. Now, he's a part-time officer, but there's a requirement now that Mr. Stacy going, Officer Stacy going into the full-time position, we need to hire behind him. So when I sat down with Officer Fillion and his family, I explained to them, this is a one-year contract. He's going to get his training, he's going to go through the whole thing, he's going to work with us, but he knows that if for some reason the grant does not continue, he's got to look for other employment. He's willing to accept that because what he's getting out of this deal, he's getting full training. He's going to get trained, he's going to get the experience, and he's going to be very marketable. I don't need to tell you that viable law enforcement candidates are very hard to find in the state. Now, it's up to me and everybody else to make sure that we perform so well that we never have to give that grant up. Rutland has a traffic safety coordinator, and he has been in that position, I think, now for four years, and he's a former Rutland City Police Officer who went to work for the Rutland County Sheriff's Department. So theoretically, if we do our job well, which we will because we don't fail, we're going to have that grant each and every year. The only thing that would pull the plug on that is if, for some reason, the federal grant money stopped. And right now, there are going to be four counties in the state that have these traffic safety coordinators. You're going to have Chittenden County, Addison County, and Rutland County, and we got that whole corridor from Fairhaven all the way north to Burlington. As a traffic safety coordinator, which we sit in on. And then, of course, Wyndham County is on the other side, and the plan is that every county in the state is going to have this. But we were selected through a number of other agencies in the state for this recognition, and I have to tell you that it's a win-win for us, and we're going to do well with it. I can promise you that. We will not fail. Does anybody have any questions on it? Now, I, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chief. I just think that the timing on this is very fortuitous, as, you know, Main Street 22A have come back into focus for the community, truck traffic, traffic, truck, traffic, traffic safety and other initiatives. I think the timing is perfect, so congratulations on securing the grant.
This officer is going to be under my direction. I'm going to give him his marching orders, but we're going to work together and work with other agencies so we can attack any problems that we've got in the state, and it was a nice feather in our cap to be acknowledged. We acknowledged the year before, we got a state award, and that certainly helped us get this in place, so. Any other questions? Folks, if I don't see you, which I'm sure I'll see most all of you some point in time before Christmas, but if not, have a Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Chief.
And thanks for the opportunity, Chief.
Okay. Recreation Committee update. Doing that, is that you or me?
It's holding them up, because I know Tim was supposed to be here, and Aaron was going to come, and if he's not here yet, then I'm guessing the buzz isn't here.
Okay, well, we'll hold, we'll hold it up.
If we have that, that'd be great.
Yep. Appointment of downtown Basin Master Plan Task Force, unless the council has a, some people that they would like to put forward for an appointment. I, today, actually, found my report for the original community visit, and in the report, there's the section that, there was the committee that was established to basically deal with the basin, and there are thirty-five, thirty-five names in this report. And so out of the thirty-five names, I'm sure that we'll be able to find two from this original committee to serve in that, that post. And I would have contacted people for today's meeting, but I just found the book today, so, and there are a lot of familiar names, and I think we could find some really good folks that could serve there. We may even want to have more than an additional two, actually, because of the numbers that we have in this, in this report. So certainly no later than probably the next meeting.
Agreed.
Would be able to fill those positions unless any of you have somebody that you have in mind. Although if you do have somebody in mind, let me know.
I do apologize, did we announce that Tim Cook was the representative from the Rec Committee last, last meeting? Okay, thank you, thank you.
We should probably wait for Tim.
Agreed.
Okay, City Managers' Report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Perry. The budget continues to move on. We, as Joan had indicated to me, in the beginning of November, we were waiting on tax time that was very beneficial to the coffers, obviously. We're not seeing anything that I haven't discussed in the past. We continue to watch a couple of line items, and Jim Laro, our DPW supervisor, is already lamenting the weather that we've had so far. Just a quick shout-out to that team, as we have not implemented the parking ban yet, these storms are wreaking havoc on the team. So we appreciate everybody's patience as, as we get closer to the ban going into effect on, on the first. I'm not, I don't have any other call-outs to the budget unless anyone has any questions for me. Be happy to, okay? That's that. I included, from the last meeting, Mayor Perry had indicated that he thought that there was a fund out there that had been set aside some over fifteen years ago called the West Main Street Improvement Fund. We were able to, Joan was able to easily locate that fund, and it does have a balance of sixty-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. I would appreciate the patience of the council while I work forward what a recommendation for the use of that funding might be. We do know that we do have an overage in the Highway Improvement Fund of some thirty-five thousand dollars. That was due to no one's fault, just a lot of tar going out at Booth Woods. So on, if not my next, the next meeting on the eighteenth, the beginning of the year, I'll bring a recommendation in front of the council as to, as to how we may reallocate that, that money. It is, it is free and clear at this point, based on the contract, and I have not found any other pots of money in the last three months, unfortunately. So that's just a quick update to, to you folks about that question. We had a visitor at our last city council meeting requesting Prospect Cemetery, requesting use of the fire station meeting room. I did reach out to Chief Brewer, and there, there is a concern that was voiced of the council, and Chief Brewer shares that concern regarding it becoming a precedent to open this, this meeting room up. Paula, and I apologize, her name escapes me. Paula Moore from the Bixby raised a viable alternative of the Bixby Library having handicap-accessible meeting room, and I think we're going to continue to try to encourage people to take advantage of that meeting room versus this one, at least until the conference room at City Hall is done, and then we'll be opening that up to a larger portion of our populace. And then one thing, I'm sorry, that did not make the agenda, and it is just an added note, we did receive a resignation the end of last week, I'm sorry, the beginning of this week, from one of our listers, Karen Quigley, has resigned her position effective immediately from the Board of Listers. That is an elected position, so we'll need some guidance from the council as to, do we want to fill that in a short-term interim basis until town meeting, when it will be, when that position will be voted on. As I said, it is an elected position, so the council can feel free to please give us their guidance on that.
The thing I, I don't know is that, I know for certain positions, the law says we shall fill it forth, forthwith, fast, in other words, and I don't know whether this position falls under that same law.
It's elected.
So it does.
Yes.
So we really have, we should be filling it.
Have to post it.
Yeah.
We have to post the vacancy.
Yeah. So why don't we post the vacancy?
Sure.
And see what responses we get.
And do they have any interest to send you a letter of interest or drop one at City Hall?
Yeah, they, they can address it to me, but it should all go to City Hall.
But they don't need to be available for an interview or anything like that, or yes?
Well, the council feel you have to interview somebody for a lister, or? I don't know. We may have more than one.
I was just going to say, if it's one, then.
No problem.
Doesn't matter. If it's more than one, then we'd have to pick them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so we'll back up on the agenda to the Recreation Committee update, just in time.
All right, let's go. I just want to check in with you guys, since you gave us a charge to tell you where we're at in the charge, and, you know, we came with the mission statement, and we have a list of things we want to accomplish, some goals for 2019, is how we framed it in the minutes. I think the minutes have been sent to Matt, if you want a more thorough explanation of what I'm going over here, because our great secretary, Aaron, is doing a good job at keeping up with everything, so. The mission statement. It is the mission of the Recreation Facilities and Programs Advisory Committee to be an advisory to the city council in matters pertaining to ongoing operation and maintenance of recreational facilities and programming. Policies with respect to recreation and use by community groups determine ways to generate revenue and to help the city council and city manager to determine future capital expenditures, additional program, and public outreach. You guys might recognize that language, because I pretty much copied and pasted it straight from the charge and rewrote it, so it's a statement instead of a charge. The number one, well, and then, so we had our first meeting. I was elected chair, and Aaron was elected secretary, and we're the only officers, I guess, committee officers. There are, you know, six adults, four high schoolers. By and far, the largest area of interest was the Veterans Park, which is all the different facilities we have down by the elementary school. And we have started talking about it in terms of phases to basically routine maintenance and upgrading, and we're calling Phase One, the resurfacing of the tennis courts, because that was done, so it makes us feel like we're in process. Phase Two is the update, repair, and renovation of the pool, which, you know, there's a pretty thorough list around of what needs to happen there. And then Phase Three is the ice rink, updating the ice rink and the skate park, which the ice rink this year has a temporary fix that's being led by Ken Sullivan, and him and Ms. Newton are on top of that for this year, but they, they have raised some money, and it may take more money to repave it, but that, that they would like to see done in the near future. I bring up Veterans Park in the three phases because one of the things that we have been talking about is there is a grant opportunity that I am here to officially recommend to the city council that we should proceed so we can get funds for Phase Two of Veterans Park, which is the pool upgrades. The other little bit of information is that there's supposed to be a representative from the Recreation Committee on the Basin Task Force, and I am that representative. I don't know how many of you remember, but I was pretty involved with the task force the first go-around. the first go-around, pretty up to speed on the process, and especially in the basin area down, downtown there. So, these, we have nine goals, and I went outline those to you guys real quick. Goal number one, contribute to and support grant writer to submit grant application for Phase Two of Veterans Park, the pool, which I just talked about. Number two, organize work parties to put on new roofs on the skate park and pool house in the summer of 2019. That's the most critical piece of maintenance that happens down there, needs to happen down there. I feel like it's kind of low-lying fruit, because roofing in and of itself is pretty inexpensive. And the work party, I thought, was a good idea, because when we had the Basin Task Force a few years ago, we had work parties to clear it out, and it had a good participation from the city, and it really gave the community a sense of accomplishment. So, I thought that would be a good way for us to start this, since we do not have a budget yet. Develop plan for Veterans Park, especially the rink and the skate park, which I already talked about. That's number four. Number five, encouraging leveling and resurface of the ice rink, so again, we've already touched on that. Number six, this, this is a, a big one, which we're, we'll get back to again, but it's identifying recreational opportunities and job responsibilities for a city employee to be hired. So, the, and the MBT, MBT, it specifically says that, that we should plan on having a Rec Committee so that they can suggest a, like a program facilitator to help with programming and recreation. And so, we are coming up with what we think would be a job description for that before we really, I think that's the first step, is to put parameters around what we're looking for. And that is in process. It's only been six weeks since we first met, so we're, I feel like we're doing pretty good. Let's see. Investigate plan, investigate plan and opportunities for bike paths that connect, routes that connect parks in the city are wayfinding for bike tourists, making a map of loops for local pedestrians and bikers. Again, this is long-term planning. Number eight, start working towards open city right-of-way from outdoor classroom to New Haven Road. I don't know how many of you are aware, but that property actually cuts through to New Haven Road. And Mr. DeBois feels like if we can get people walking through there, it will help maintain the path just by beating it down. It will also, you know, with more community back there, there'll be less troublemaking back there. And then, work with the base, number nine, work with the basin committee to establish a dog park motion, oh, to establish a dog park, motion to a dog, goals by Matt and by Rutland, that is, that's not you guys. So, that's what we're going on, that's the direction we're leaning towards. Did I miss anything, Aaron?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, any questions, comments?
Well, the only thing is, is that you mentioned about doing something with walking paths and, and routes for people to use for bicycles or, and so on. We had a grant some time ago that has a report that has laid out a lot of those already. So, if we can ever find it in City Hall someplace, there is already at least a preliminary report on potential walking paths and, and running routes, bicycle routes, in and around Virgens, and circling outside of Virgens and, and coming back in. There's, so, I just wanted to let you know, there's, there's a report that can give you a little boost on doing that part of it.
Council, I have a report, so he made a stack of stuff before he took off for Oregon.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
So, it might be in there somewhere.
Okay.
We do have a report from some Middlebury College students.
That's, there's also that one.
That one I have.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll be using that for reference material, but I would love to receive a copy. And these are early stages of the planning, so we, we have time to get all that together.
Well, if I have it, I'll pass it on.
That'd be great.
For the grant, though, I thought the board should endorse the Recreation Committee to go forward on that, to make it a stronger application. So, unless...
Is there a committee in any position to take the lead on writing that grant, though?
We are not.
That's what I thought. Somebody needs to be writing this grant, and everybody's like, "I'll help," but...
When is it due?
The fifteenth of December, so it's kind of, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here tonight, because if we have any opportunity to get it together, this is the first step, is getting the approval of the council.
Yeah.
And it's, it's definitely a tight, tight timeline.
And who, who is it to? Is it to the state?
It is the state. It is a program that Phil Scott has started, and the hardest thing we're having a problem with with this grant is quantifiable data that the pool helps the local economy.
This must be the VGS grants. Oh, no, it's not the VGS grant. I don't know how complicated it would be.
So, if I could just just review them just there. First off, I just want to thank Chairman Cook. He's been great to work with as the Rec Committee is getting off the ground. The, as he indicated, the master plan for downtown is heavily, heavily supports the development of a Recreation Committee and somebody to steer that committee. And again, I just want to, I want to thank Chairman Cook for the work done so far. I, I do have some concerns about being able to execute this grant on a timely basis, but I do feel that there are going to be other opportunities that are going to come around that we will be in a better position to apply for and secure the money that we need to move this, this process forward, Tim. We, we don't have a proficient grant writer in our toolbox right now, but we do feel that there is an opportunity in the near future that somebody will be joining the larger Virgens community that will be able to assist in, in that role. But I don't think that this can get turned around, you know, in two and a half weeks' time.
Right. That was a feeling I got in our communication, but I had to make this pitch to you guys.
Certainly, okay. Absolutely. And again, thank you. And I, I don't want to be the, the naysayer, I just, I think it's, it's, we should probably focus on other things coming down the pipeline and, and be able to do a good job and secure. You know, one of the things I keep reading as I'm reviewing grants is, a lot of, if you're, if you're eligible or not, is determined on what your, what your past grant writing ability was, or the product that you put in front of them. So, I want to make sure that as we tee these up and, and have them available for review, we've really done a great job.
So, I guess what I would suggest, although you said there's not a proficient grant writer, I don't want to slap myself on the back, but I've written tons of grants.
By all means.
But, but, but I don't have time to write, write this one, not in that short a time. But it probably wouldn't hurt for us to authorize it. So, in the event that, for some reason, somebody pops up and says, "Oh, well, I, I can jump in and do something with this," because I don't know, by just quickly going through this, how, how complicated the grant actually is, but since we're a designated downtown, there's a preference to designated downtowns to get the grant. So, I, I guess I'd entertain a motion to authorize a grant to the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Pilot Grant Program. And I don't know, I haven't read through to see whether there's any match required.
This particular one, I do not believe indicates that there is a match. One of the challenges that, that Tim and I faced was, you know, we're focusing on the pool, and as he indicated in his summary to us, you know, quantifying the economic lift of doing a pool enhancement is a challenge. We all know on states, you know, we get a large group of, you know, families from outside our community coming in, and we know Main Scoop is busy, and Three Squares, and some of our restaurants, but it's, we don't really have tools in place at this point, ready to, to be able to quantify, you know, what that asset brings to us outside of our budget, you know, our revenue.
There is one, there is one angle, though, that has been kind of underutilized, and that is, because we're so active with the swim team, and particularly bringing in, I don't know how often it is that we bring in the statewide match, and that is definitely an economic development activity. It brings in tons of people and lots of money. And, and so, we may be able to use that as an angle. Again, the shortness of time, I'm not sure that any of this could be put together, but when we do ultimately go for this, because I think it's a, each year it happens, that we could use that, definitely use that as an angle.
Of course.
I mean, I guess if we're planning ahead, we can actually talk to businesses before it happens this year, so they might be looking for some data that give us, and that might be...
That'd be a huge help, absolutely.
...be an angle, which we should probably do anyways, if they can allow here, because if that's something these grants want to see in the grant writing process, we should be able to hand that over.
Well, the Reynoldsville, just the last couple of years, when we put some time and effort into maintaining the pool, swim team numbers went up, and the number of people visiting the pool went up. So, we might be able to just extrapolate, saying, "Okay, well, there's money right there, and more use just means there's more bodies here, so we can't tell you Three Squares did better," but I'm not sure we can ever figure that out. But at least we can say, "We did some work, and this is what we did." So, if we can do more work, we're estimating, might be a way to play those numbers without actually having the numbers.
I'll make a motion to endorse...
Authorize.
Authorizing...
There's the first sentence there.
The Vermont, blah, 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 to make grants up to, yeah, Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Pilot Grant Program, should a grant writer...
Materialize. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe Wendy Knight might be one to talk to. When she was here doing the forum with the governor, she said she'd do almost, you know, anything we needed, and she's written them before. She lives in Patton.
I can connect you.
That would be awesome. Thank you very much.
With phase one, two, three, is there an idea within one of those phases that you're going to try and better connect the pieces of that park? Right now, they're sort of separate. You've got the pool, you've got the tennis courts, you've got the skate park, but they're all independent of one another. Is there a way to link them better so we can say, "This is Veterans Park," as opposed to, "There's the pool, and there's the..." Just wondering if that was in part one of the phases, if that was an idea to somehow connect them.
Well, the closest to that that we've had a discussion, remind, you've only had two meetings, and the first one was basically meet and greet. The discussion revolved around traffic flow and fences and keeping skateboards where they shouldn't be. And so, that was, that was not on my radar. That's what happens when you have, you know, the school gym teacher on your, and the principal who watches daily, you know? That's, that's the good observation they have. So, in that way, we've discussed it. And also, in establishing a New Haven Road access to the outdoor classroom with a, a flow of foot traffic through that area, I think it will inevitably end up connecting those different facets of the park together. Any final? All right. Contact me anytime if any questions, concerns, ideas, and I'm happy to take it all in, figure it out. All right, thank you.
Okay. Mayor's Report, the only thing that I have is just a reminder that next month, we only have one meeting. It's in the middle of the month, December eighteenth, I believe. So, that is it.
Make the motion to adjourn?
Been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.